It's been hot here all day. We were in here at two fifteen and every person who walked in. Too bad.
Okay. Then we can begin our policy and curriculum meeting for October thirteenth. We have two items for discussion with curriculum. About the in-service and then we have cell phone procedures. And then we have a policy for review, then we have four policies for revision. So that brings us to the October thirteenth in service.
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, we had a in-service date today. Which traditionally our October, we call it the best practices fair where different staff members have an opportunity to. Volunteer to present their peers. In the last couple of years and including this year, the half of it is best practice here in the morning. Then we had some building, land, professional development in the afternoon. In on this Columbus Day, traditionally Tumburk County, there is some common countywide services. Most people are on board subjects in addition to social studies offsite. They were in Fleetwood, Flair Countywide. Just like grateful to teachers for presenting. We had a great list, uh, Louise Moyer. Karen Austin. Jen Nattress, Angela Bucci Erb. Jimmy Hirsch did a session today, Carrie Shagan. Reese Mace. Amy Young. Uh, this is Ray Snyder and Angela Bucci Erb actually the second in addition to similar bar administrators of several of us. Um, also led sessions in the morning and it was choice for everyone. So led to a very engaged morning here at the high school with all staff. A K through twelve and then everybody kind of broke out mostly by building or by level, I should say, because most elementary school, elementary school. They were reviewing the report card and how it aligns to current practices in addition to some grade level. Um, opportunities here at the high school and. Little bit at the middle school, mostly here at the high school, it was mostly department level working on. Um, math department got together, we're gonna Alex for your call. Maybe about a year ago, um, their presentation where I'd say, uh, online program working to post math mediation. Um, various parts of the math department are working on it, Mr. Lynch kind of led that and brought together training. And, uh. You know, other department, departmental training throughout the day, it's just grateful for those teachers for being willing to share their knowledge and skills with their peers. On these in-service days without them, you know, we wouldn't have the opportunity to run a professional development day like this. And I think, uh, it goes without saying that the peer-to-peer learning opportunities are always our highest rated. It's kind of directly what teachers do them. So it was a great day. Uh, we'll be happy to have students back in the building tomorrow. Good day of learning. Thank you all.
Looks like there's news and the experts every house. Uh, that brings us to cell phone procedures.
Yeah, and this, there's been some private conversations, I think, probably most school districts, both states, some private conversations about cell phone procedures. Um, within the school building, it's primarily impacts high school, I mean, obviously middle school a little bit elementary to a much lesser extent. As you know, you know, national news, uh, New York State passed a law. Um, for bell-to-bell cell phone policy in every school district. In Pennsylvania, there's a hearing for House Committee, I think, next week. Uh, to discuss, you know, potential legislation related to cell phones in schools. So we're not alone to have private conversations about this. I, I can say without question, you know, in our halls, in our schools, we're in better shape than many. But the distraction that is available to students certainly takes away from the learning environment, no matter, you know, no matter where they are. Here in Pennsylvania or throughout the world and, you know, they're. Just wanting to bring that conversation to the public, you know, as far as. How we can strengthen some of those procedures. Our policy is very broad and basically says, you know, in summary, that. Um, we do support the use of electronic devices, not specifically phones, you know, when, um, even personal electronic devices. When, um, appropriate. Based off of the learning environment, but defers then to the school procedures through the student handbook. Um, the current, again, just looking at the high school, because that's the. That's where the majority of this conversation takes place. You know, the hi- the high school current. Policy or procedure is that any electronic device. Is not to be used during the school day, the students are to keep expected to keep cell phones stored in their locker or their laptop top case for the duration of the day. Um, that was a new procedure for last full year twenty four, twenty five. That within the halls or in lunchtime, they are permitted to use their devices, it's more during academic time. I would say in the majority of classrooms, those rules are followed with the exception of, you're gonna find a lot of phones in pockets, you know, more so than you are, and maybe you know laptop. Bags and. As we've discussed in a variety of venues. Potential access is what's really drawing students away from being able to fully attend to their. Fully attend, uh, to the lesson, I do think there's problematic to have phones in pockets, the constant buzzing, certainly distracting for students, even if they're not. Ultimately, you know, disobeying the rules and this way you're kind of way like pulling out their phones, our teachers don't experience that a lot. Um, you know, where students are pulling out their phones in the middle of class when they're, when they're in a lesson. But yet the distraction still exists, you know, that's, that's a reality, so, um. If we wanted to. Strengthen, reinforce, um, and, and bring sort of a collective advocacy around. The cell phone policies, we kind of have to, some decisions obviously to make. Um, you know, are we talking bell-to-bell, because those bell-to-bells are a little bit more difficult to manage because you don't have somebody. Assigned to a student in the hallway, you know, to make sure that they don't have, uh, their phones with them, we're looking at definitely lockers primarily, uh, having them in there. Um, if we are just looking for a little bit of a stronger, um. Process in terms of in the classroom and exactly what happens in terms of repercussions, and those are things we can kind of work towards getting even a little bit better reinforced. You know, there's the potential for. I think lunch, but no halls, yeah, I, I, there's just so many different levels you can get to, you know, um, one thing you will see in the halls routinely, and I think most schools, it certainly here is you're gonna see one AirPod in and. Um, in the hallways, that's, that's sort of permitted. Um, you know, that's a, that's a question that comes up in many. Um, one thing I think to be wise is for us to fully ban watches, you know, if they have anything, I think the. The what, not the all watches, obviously smart watches, you know, it's just. It's impossible to manage the notifications at that, you know, I think, but we're looking at different degrees, there's just so many different pieces that we could have. As part of the policy and then exactly, you know, what happens in terms of repercussions, I mean, right now, students, they would get a warning, then there's a detention sign. Uh, we do not really have a confiscation piece to our, to our procedures, um, you know, there's some schools do, some schools don't, that's. Fifteen years ago, I think most schools had a confiscation piece to it, you know, and then with the. Privacy issues of their phones, you know, and most of us kind of went away from that, but with someone back to it with the public. Demand, I think, and, and repatriation and need to. Really prioritize our students' attention when they're in school, so again, there's just a lot to it, I think that the discussion in public is, you know, is worthwhile. And just for kind of everyone here's sake, I think, looking at a reasonable timeline for any type of change. I think this beginning of the second quarter is kind of a reasonable timeline for us, which gives us about just about a month from now, you know, so where we could have some discussion here, we could work with the high school team. And middle school team and then. Kind of not picking on the high school, it's a high school student issue more so than middle school, um, you know, and then work with, uh. Work with those teams to kind of put together some procedures that, that would work, um, to even strengthen their, their current belief. And as I think we all know, for the more, large part, all teachers agree, you know, um, I think. Two years ago, Dr. Sicker did, um, had some groups together, focus groups of students and students when they. Are being open and honest there, right, they don't want to be distracted, um, despite the fact that. You know, there's the allure of the phone to all of us, and I'm sitting here with two phones open in front of us right now, you know, that if something goes off, you have to look at it for sure, um. You know, so everybody kind of, I think, wants that, there is a challenge, and one of the challenges we know today is that. Parents regularly contact their kids during the day and throughout the day, like that is not. It's not an infrequent thing, I think it's probably the norm in most households today. And that's just a behavioral change, I think everybody. Really get a message to a student, there's ways to do that. Ways to do before cell phones, where you're raised to do it today, uh, and vice versa, it's just a good message. So just all things to consider as we get to, uh, sort of common agreement of what procedure. Just open it up to. Discussion.
You know, I don't say, but I. Save it, because I was at the meeting before, and so. Chance to.
Yeah, I think it's coming, and Tidham School has a similar policy already in place. And with the state legislature even. Doing committee meetings, I assume that's what they're doing right now.
Yeah, they're hearings now and they're in committee, uh, I wouldn't be shocked if by twenty six, twenty seven, there's some legislation that says we have to. Have a bell-to-bell or some technical.
So I mean, I, I think if, if we start being proactive in this whole situation, then. You know, the, the only thing I would say about, you know, possibly banning the smart watches, some kids, that's all they have, they don't have a cell phone. Because I, I know a couple of kids that are like that. So maybe banning them might be. Problematic for some because I have parents pushing back that, well, that's the only means of communication. So it's, it's something to think about, but that.
I think they just have to put them in their lock, whatever the rule was for the normal, you would treat the watches the same way.
Correct. And, and I believe that's one for like the middle school area and the high school, I imagine they all have cell phones by now. Some do have a s- a smartphone, I mean, the watches too, so. But I mean, I. I do think that it's a big distraction in, in classrooms, like I said, if it's in your pocket and it's buzzing. And, you know, every, anybody would start pulling their phone out. So I, I think it's something that we definitely should take a look at. So.
I think with the watches, um, we still have virtual visit, right?
I do.
Um, I know, uh, I think. Virtual visit, I feel like Otis did too at some point, and I think they use, you know, that, that, or watch human.
Yeah, I don't think the ones that we have. Okay, also can. Receive text messages remotely, I think they're just. If it's traditional, having your steps, calendars, et cetera, but. Check that. Because I. And that's, that's a good point, though, as we get into, you know, there would be watches that can wear versus like. Monitoring watches of so many different varieties is a. Neo-challenge, um. There's clearly what. Is the iPhone. It's not called an iPhone, I think it's, uh.
Apple one.
Apple watch, pardon me, apple watch, so the apple watch is pretty clear what it looks like, but there are other varieties that look less. Or more like a traditional watch, plus.
The, the only thing I just thought about, the only pushback that we could have really putting phones in lockers or whatever. If a student has one of those, uh, glucose monitoring devices, you know, there's gonna be some of those instances, so.
There's, I mean, every policy I've seen that's strong, that has, you know, exceptions for medical. And, you know, traditionally those students are always responsible for their devices, anybody, it's a part of their eating health.
I think we've done a very good job at, at monitoring it, I've asked my kid, like, if he thinks that. Like, do you see kids bringing out their phones, and he tells me that they don't really, that the teachers are really racking down, which is great, I'm glad to hear that. Um, I would like this to be more. Strict about, I like the idea of the box in the door. When they come in to put their phone away, because, yeah, but we're putting it in the pocket, and, yeah. We claim that we may not put it in their laptop bag, they don't offer that.
Yeah, there's different varieties of those, I mean, there are little lockers, you know, there's different types of lockers that you can purchase to put in classrooms that hold devices versus, uh. You know, just a simple watch with a slot, which is a lot of different varieties there. Obviously, there was a little bit of a pouch movement for a while, I think that's kind of on the outs, I think a little bit because of it is, because of its extreme cost, and at one point. We were looking and just, you know, to outfit our little sort of high school, it's about twenty-five thousand dollars and. There's pros and cons to that system, um, I think we can achieve nearly the same results, which. Without, that's like best.
I think it's a compliment too, if you have the box inside the door and then they can use it in the hallways, if their parents are that concerned about them. They'll touch you back when they're out of class, right? You know, so those parents that would be like, oh, my kid, it's like, all right, well, they'll have that one day. I mean, bell-to-bell would be the greatest, but.
And if there really is a big emergency, the parents can contact the school office.
Oh, sure.
Communicate that, that was done in the past.
Yeah, I mean, now the norm. Say the norm, but now what happens on a regular basis is. Student goes down to the office with armed intentions, says. My dad told me to stop down and see you, and that's, you know, it's this kind of backwards sort of way that the message gets there and, um. Again, I think that's what's good intention to the parent communicating with the child, that they should communicate with their school officer or administration, but. The traditional way of calling the office and having a message flow to the student is just not going. So I mean, just kind of in summary, we're looking as, uh, so far as a little bit strengthening what we do now, look for a commonplace. But they can be off of the student's person when they're in classroom, you know, with, uh, some type of a box, et cetera, if they refuse to do that. You know, we will immediately go to the attention, kind of follow that aggressive discipline as. As we've worked with other. Um. Um, you know, as with other disciplinary fractions. You know, and, and one advantage there, sometimes looking at some scribbled notes from talking to teachers today is that. Like, here at the high school, they've had a lot of success, I think, with using a smart pass, which is a way that they use their devices to kind of sign out, you know, um. With the device in a separate location, this box away. You wouldn't have students who are exiting class to access their notes, I mean, right now, that's one of the. Temptations is, I'm gonna ask them at the restroom, they'll be able to check in the kid. Now. That cognitive strain of just finding a way to get to the notification or get the message.
Spend more time figuring out how to get on a class and.
Absolutely, I mean, there's, there's no doubt that some students did, for whatever reason, you know, something is compelling them genuinely, sit there and think. How long until I can ask, like, you know, so I can go to the lab and then, you know, so they know if they ask in the middle of obstruction, it's. Go so well that to the table, you know, they didn't good at navigating versus their server. If those are all, you know. Just reality things.
A couple of things, uh. For. Whatever we would land on, if it sounds like they would be checking them at the, the classroom level. You know, before we purchase a. A box that's specifically designed. I guess my. Quick question would be, or maybe my, or so my. My suggestion, where I'm coming from, would be that that would be consistent. Across all classes, so like it would be something that. Would be provided for the teachers, so they're all doing it, they're all, instead of going. Create a system in which. This is accomplished, I think it makes it a lot easier for teachers, that being said, I think I would also. Be in favor of. Leaning. A little bit more towards what. The, the teachers think would be most effective at reaching that. That end goal, but I think just from a teacher perspective. Self, uh. I, I liked, I like when Advent says, like, this is what we're doing, this is what's expected, and so everybody's. Same standard, and it just helps the role a little bit better, um.
That was, uh, just to say, we had, we met with, um. High school staff who's here on site today to talk just a little bit, and I mean, that was kind of the. The start of the conversation was, anything is just a rule unless we all enforce it the same exact way, and that's from. You know, teacher to administration, right, it's the consistency of both, as soon as we start saying, well, it's not enforced the same way in one classroom versus the next, or. That the administration does not handle every situation, then the rule itself is. At uses, I mean, it's, it's not being applied that way.
I, I'm also. My experience, the confiscation, I think, is. Is helpful, I don't think it would have to be something that would be, parents have to pick it up, I think that's where that would become problematic. Um, but confiscation's at the point, or at least somewhere in there at some point, where when there's a fraction, maybe it's not the first one. Uh, but at some point, the confiscation for the entirety of the day. Uh, where they would have to pick it up at the office. I think. And still work well. But that's a motivating factor, I think in general, too. Students have a tendency to kind of rise to whatever the expectation is. So I think just as we move through this. Um, certainly. There would be, uh. Discussion points, but ultimately. I would always tend towards. What's gonna, what's gonna be the, the best way to get us most effectively to. To the end point, instead of this is gonna get us close, it's gonna help us, it's gonna, you know, be an improvement, we're moving in the right direction. To kind of start off, um, on the. The best. Like possible. Uh, and then I guess the other one, what's we'd be looking at with the boarding system, would that be something that. Thinking more is tracked by the teacher, individual teacher, or is that something that's tracked, like it would be a write-up? And then. The disciplinary, the administrator would then track that, meet with students, say this is a warning, go with your policy.
I think it has to be tracked from. Administration side for the write-up, a warning, right, it's otherwise. You know, ten teachers, yeah, yeah, one student's getting ten warnings sometimes before they actually have, you know, concussion. All the teachers on their schedule, or the teacher in their schedule, or somebody coming, you know, of course. So I think it has to be the official warning that is then. Sent to the office, and administration meets with the student. A lot of times probably a warning is what's gonna come next, and the administration's, I don't know, it's all right. I think that's, yeah, most likely to.
And then I, I think I would lean more towards lunch being the exception, excluded in multiple ways.
Yeah. But, you know, lunch. I think there's good rationale for lunch, which is seven hours, and they can stay, you know, down in the voices given. Just the, the social nature of. Students today, and sometimes that is the way students need to break their day to. Just access what they do on their phone, you know, with a reason. But it's. What we, what we're trying to prevent some is the constant content switching that happens when we are going from where. In math class, you know, working on, uh, learning math concepts. Now checking identification, oh, I'm, you know, I'm responding to this text, which in forty-minute periods. We're continuing to do that in the hallways, you know, repetitively, if we're constantly checking this, it's lunch, it's the middle part of the day, it's great, it's different, so. That makes.
I think one thing to consider though is like, if we do. The collection at the beginning of the class, and a student wants to go use the facilities, it stays in that.
Stays, stays, yeah.
Don't take it.
Sure.
I do kind of wonder, this is just double tap, I guess, but like, if then, like you're bringing up the social aspect of lunch, if that then. Launching to an antisocial event.
Yeah, just like that also, because everybody's so down, they do all the film thing, and then they don't talk to each other, yeah.
I think it's really interesting to track, does it make it worse than it is now, or is it just more the same of, of ways now, you know, um, you know, that's something, certainly the monitor and observer will say. Socialological experiment to some extent, but, um. Yeah, I think that's, that's also the answer for. I needed to get a message to my kid, you know, get everything, yeah, lunchtime, maybe to check that. There's a.
We're having a hard time forcing them to know, will follow a usage, if you're giving them out of a box. In the classroom, it's, it's the one we're just gonna do, when they give it back is. Is want to look at it, we have a little. Difficult action, of course. This is gonna be the first reaction, oh, I'm gonna come back, that's all, right? It's really starting to test people's resolve, here, here, here you go, but you can't use it though.
Yeah. In the hallways. No matter what we're supposed to, so if that's the hardest place to. Nobody's really assigned to the hall. Long stretches in between.
I think that would be important. Yeah, and not that I'm advocating, but. Not that, that should be in case, but I think that's a good point, because if it can't be. If there's, if there's not enough coverage in the hallways where. It's not consistent, then I would rather not have the. Have a consistent work in them. So, but that would be important, there's, and if that's not the case, that would.
Yeah, well, you're talking to, you know, you're gonna make a rule that you know you're broken, just waters down all your rules, so. Rules are set, should be followed. We don't think it's really practical.
We can get some feedback from high school staff on that. Probably gonna say, really. It's just gonna be next to my school match, um, if they're allowed to. I think, you know, bell-to-bell policies are looking at, it's in the law.
All day long, yeah.
You're saying this is prominently in the high school?
We will do the same thing in the middle school, I know, you know, when you talk to, and, yeah, we, I live in the middle school, so I just see it, and. The only time I really see phones in the middle school is when the bell rings at the end of the day, walking to the bus, if you stand in the hallway, you can see. A large, a high percentage of the kids checking their phone, but that's walking to the bus, you know, um, I don't see them during the day at all. You know, and get out, somebody. We share bathrooms in the eighth grade half the time, you know, because we're just right there, so I just don't see phones. And talking to teachers, the eighth graders deal with it, eighth grade teachers deal with a little bit, sixth grade don't deal with all, you know, so it's. It's, it's not going to be difficult to enforce.
So could you do locker until lunch, you can get it at lunch and then go back in till the end of the day?
I mean, we certainly could. Yeah, and that's. I like that idea. And that, that, uh. The, the advantage of the. Locker in the classroom, the box in the classroom is that I walked in, I put it there, the teacher sees it, if it's in the, if it is in your locker. Do I see it in your pocket, you know, it, it leads to those, that's just the decision point, is where. The social agreement between the teacher and the student of I'm putting it in the classroom locker for instruction time. I believe is gonna be a lot easier to manage, I don't, lots of looking for ease, but a lot, it's, it's gonna be more effective.
People are still gonna need to go into the bathroom with their phones, they're ready to sit in the locker.
Yeah.
I mean, the feedback I heard from Tidham was, uh, a bunch of teachers put. Numbers on the boxes in association with desks in, in room. And they can tell right away if somebody didn't put their phone in there, and if somebody did, and then it's, where's your phone at?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think that actually leads to more accountability, it's just, uh. Permitting phones in pockets in the hall, but it's, it's a little, but otherwise, you have no idea.
If it doesn't go smoothly, it leads to five minutes lost.
And, and again, we're fortunate here, it's down here, people goes. Sorry, I, I don't want to, this conversation can be perceived as like this implicit, students are, you know, uh, shirking the rules, that's not what our teaching feedback of teachers are. But, but we all acknowledge that they are intended for the, for the, for the. That's, that's. I think we have a good idea kind of direction and, um. Yeah, we're working with some high school staff and, yeah, targeting, beginning of the second quarter, because that's, looking at that second week of November, spend a month to control myself without extending. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then that brings us to, uh, one policy for review. Eight thirty point one.
Yes, eight thirty point one, we've looked at this over the last number of years, it doesn't need to be reviewed each year, so that's why it's on the agenda, there's. Yes, eight thirty point one, look at this over the last several years, it doesn't need to be reviewed each year, so that's why it's on the agenda, there's nothing.
Then that brings us to policies to consider for revision, and the first one is policy one oh five curriculum.
There is a paragraph added that discusses especially. Instruction days as far as what we do with constipation, constipation day. Bill of rights weekend and so forth. Nothing has changed. Per se, it's just simply adding that paragraph.
So these are already on throughout the year?
Yes, yes, so examples, and there's a few. The ones most pertinent, I would say, you know. Different things about the rights. Depending on the building. But yes, those those items. We discussed with our team, uh you know, I I wouldn't. I'm not so sure that we have. Honored P A code towards Arbor Day, you know, in some years, and that's just something we need to be mindful of, you know, that. Constitution Day, we make sure there's an accountability to, you know, every year and. I I have not certain what's occurring on the day every year and every building, and I don't know that our principles necessarily. You know, we'll say that there's classroom activities, there's definitely outdoor activities, so we're gonna need to catalog that a little better. Yeah, and I I think. I think it really would depend on how you find an instruction. So. You include outdoor activities, building wide activity and so forth, yes, very. Pinpointed on classroom instruction. Yeah, so we we talked about some of those things, but I I think overall historically. You know, there's evidence. Now that it's. In this plan or in this policy the way it is. A little more explicit about it. It's a good thing. As with other items. I think overall, they had a good job. With these things, especially throughout the years, what our social studies department. There's no constitution that in and the rights. I think there's, I think there's a lot of evidence there. And I think to the end of the day, I mean, I bring that up. We are very proud of our, the way we use our property and our outdoors education in general, whether it's our structure and over there perfectly. Our students have also been building this way to the free team lead uh. Here on campus. Pretty much elementary school, there's various activities outside throughout the day, throughout the school year, so. We're very proud of the outdoor education piece, it's gonna make sure we tie some of them. Is this? Is this? I mean, that means to be addressed in every grade level every year, or what's, how new is this a new? Now, it's been, and that's how P A code, P A code is written as if it's in every grade level. Think, you know, building wide is probably the most. Yeah, the constitution day, um we do it very different by grade level, but I mean, that's the constitution. It's to the uh complexity that you get into constitution day very strictly like. For Arbor Day, we could celebrate planting trees in the outdoors. This year, the twenty fourth, it's it's not the same day.
So it's around.
Yeah, it's always in that same week.
Can they tie like birthday and Arbor Day together? Or is this?
Also birthday.
Birthday.
Yes, birthday is. Yeah, I mean, the code is in, is written in a very kind of. Every, every school, every. In every classroom, you will celebrate Arbor Day. I don't, I think we can absolutely bring the two together. To me, we, not only a requirement, but also just the spirit.
It just from what was said, so it sounds like some of the more involved content comes from. Like. The departments, like the social studies department, whereas. Maybe uh the less. Uh, you know, content driven stuff is more like building wide, that's what I'm describing, like.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I mean, that'll be. Just, you know, for example, for Constitution Day. Put out, I put out this year, I put out the reminder in about two weeks before Constitution Day, is it the social studies department? Uh leaders, and they, you know, it's it's annual thing, and they have by grade level, but they do. That's really good for Arbor Day. It will be the principles, and teachers can then, if there's an appropriate lesson tool, they're going to class, great. Otherwise.
Those are always fun days, especially like it's the building lot stuff. Is there any chance I'd be able to check out someone else sometime? Any other questions on one oh five? For motion, one oh five to the full board, so so all in favor say aye. Full board, that brings us to one twenty two.
Next to uh one twenty two and one twenty three, we do have a guest with us tonight. But but I figured since this year, I'm assuming it was gonna be here for the next week anyway, if there are any questions you had regarding this two policies. Is available for questions. Well, myself. But one twenty two. They attempted to delineate, did not attempt, but actually did. In the policy. Pulling out some of the language with uh. So there's a couple of. Word changes throughout. Um under definitions for one twenty two, there is a um. There's a line that's stricken. As far as marked by student participation, processes of initiation plan organized execution, there's not. Students don't always do those things at all. Under authority, nothing big there, so the second page. As far as eligibility. Whether students may participate, now those that are X. They they do match our our policy one twenty three with. Athletics. So recommend, recommendation was, you know, to think, keep those two policies consistent. Mentioned policy, but those are optional for us. And then under off-campus activities. The items that are stricken here, not necessarily are they not a part of it, however, you recall back in May of twenty twenty five, few months ago. We booked the policy two eighteen, student discipline made some, made some changes to it. So P S B A is recommending to take that language out of here. Simply revert back to that section of policy two eighteen. Rather than being redundant. Or having the possibility of something that's inconsistent. So that's why those one, two, three, four, five, and six. Are stricken under that section.
So do we want to name that policy number in that section?
Thing, because it still says off-campus activities, and when there's nothing there.
Right, I mean, it says that student conduct should be addressed in. Regards to our discipline policy, I feel like I would like to see the number of the policy there.
Something along the lines of shall be addressed in accordance with policy two eighteen. In relation to the provisions of the student discipline policy regarding. Activities.
Any other questions on that? Then. Including those stated changes. One change. On for motion, we want twenty two to the full board. All in favor, say aye. One twenty three.
One twenty three. The uh. Purpose of interscholastic activity and athletic programs has. Changed slightly through the P S B A, those words. As far as inspiring unit interest. Definition of interscholastic athletics is not chosen at all. Under authority. It's a slight change as far as making sure that each student. Is covered by accident insurance, which was already there, however, in free, free of injury was marked off. Then adapted to the final part of that statement. Regarding a licensed physician. Physical examination to determine whether there are obvious injuries. Place the student or others. Second page, once again, off-campus activities, mentioned. We could do the same thing with the policy two eighteen, adding that policy to this. See there, one through six of those um. Requirements for academic or athletic eligibility based on academic requirements. Tending school. Having other athletic return. Guaranteed contact standards. That would mimic what is in one twenty two.
Under authority, where it shows that we're striking Berks County Athletic Association. Bylaws, I guess. Um is that not? Relevant anymore for some reason?
Have you ever thought of that?
I think for purposes of the policy, I think it makes sense to not have that in because everything that. B C I double A. Votes and follows as far as eligibility standards is taken directly with the G I double question. So everybody's good with the same revision on the off-campus activities? Any other questions? On one twenty three? Then. With the same stated changes for the off-campus activity, looking for a motion one twenty three to the full board. All in favor? Aye. Twenty three to the full board. First reading. And then that's six to six point one travel reimbursement.
Yes, this policy uh specifically related to federal programs, so anyone who was traveling for activities under a federal. There is a requirement to acquire prior approval before costs or such. Travel activity. And then as far as reimbursement policies, industry regulations. Couple changes there as far as. As far as wording. Just to make sure that our activity.
Any other questions on six to six point one? And with that, looking for motion move six to six point one to the full board. All in favor, say aye. Six to six point one moves to the full board, is there any other? Business concerns? Looking for a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.
Way to go.
I'd like to call tonight's facilities actually very good meeting, meaning the order. We've got some things in both facilities, national regular. First up, we'll do facilities and we have track surface painting.
Just wanted to bring that up again. I believe we touched on it last year. Just got some new pricing. From American Athletic Track and Turf, the ones who did the track originally, which it was very, very super pointed out. It's about ten years ago. They have, they give us a quote for cleaning and restriping. Forty-six thousand five dollars. And then if we wanted depending on where we are. To do redo the rubber surface, which was two hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred. So it's just to get an update on cost. Cross-country needs to just be looking out there. It's quite dirty and lines are starting to fade a bit. Everybody's aware at some point in time, it needs to get. So you want to add anything to the track lining?
Like, like Richard said, I mean, it's, we definitely see the impact of just dirt rhyme building, building up over there. Over the past decade. I still feel that the rubber itself is still very good shape. It's just that mother nature is taking its toll on the actual lining of the track. Still unusable for what we needed to be, but it's important.
Question, sure, this is a very reasonable, obvious answer for, but we have a line painting issue. The right kind of paint in that in the track.
I don't know if it has a program for the track. That goes up. Right, so, yeah, the line, our line painter goes off of predetermined maps that we know and all different. So we can adjust a soccer field. We can adjust a baseball field. We can adjust crossfield, all those things. Track, I have not seen it.
There may have been, when we, when we purchased that, were there purchased custom maps?
There was upgrades at that point in time when we got it. We got the middle, middle package per se, the bottom package was a soccer field, you know, one field per se. We got the next package up was with a variety of fields. Then the next one up was custom logos.
I think it's a custom. I mean, I think it's worth a question.
Yeah, like to say, can the machine handle the paint? A, like, that's probably.
And but it's, it can, I suspect we could pay something for that. So I would say that seems less complex than some other thing.
The other thing though is there's like a special way of pressure washing that track then too, so not blasting the rubber off the surface.
They apparently have semi-custom rig to clean it, which again is a type of pressure washing unit that they drive on the track to wash it all. I have not seen it and I don't know how much goes off. I know we, Mr. Upso and I were just talking today that, you know, you go off to the sides, there's a concession stand, you can see the little bits of rubber that have come off, I'm afraid of. Potentially damaging. And I'm sure we can back the pressure on, but which are things that we have and do. Where we should leave to the professionals. From our side, end of time. Same with the if we have time to do it as well.
That quote is a clean handshake.
That's a clean.
If we were able to do our striping.
I mean, even if it costs significant amount to get the
You don't have to look at that too. This hasn't been touched in ten years, they're right.
Correct.
No, no painting, nothing, so ten years, forty-nine thousand dollars. How much were we? But I mean, some will look good to to, to like a special kind of paint too, that you have to put on or it's just outdoor.
So I guess we can explore those, but the intent was to, if we need to budget for forty-nine thousand dollars to do it, to put it in the budget for twenty-six to one second, that's kind of like attention to be there. This, I say.
Piece of this might be with the turf tank, which is designed for field paint. With that nozzle on it, where it's two parts water, one part paint, so it's very different paint that's going through that machine is that would the turf tank be able to handle most likely probably a thicker paint that is needed for a job like this?
So I think that's the first question, you know. The answer is yes to that, I suspect.
Then I'd be curious as to what the cost of that map would be then too. It's a lot of, a lot of questions.
We can ask them. Again, that's why we, you know, we don't need it tomorrow. So those are all great questions that we'll go back to multiple vendors and ask. There could be other vendors that actually get, you know, one, try season, spring.
Yeah, yeah.
And we weren't thinking it would be for track season, it would be during the summer. Then some, look at this, what does pay you?
Yes. The only thing with using the maps to do the football and soccer field, right? Not a big deal, because if you're off by a little bit. It's not really going to matter because the brighter paint is what your field is. But if you're off by a little bit when you're trying to do that single code around the track. It could get really wonky like really quick if your goal is shifted even just a little bit, like trying to track, so. If they have the maps, I'm sure. Look at doable, that's my only question. How accurate it is. So like, do you guys look at like a GPS picture of the field and line the map over top of that?
Yeah, we can adjust it.
Okay.
In fact, we have updated iPad now for it. That we can adjust that. You know, sizes. Rotation. The other thing is grassroots back. And then we just have to repaint. This will be potentially leaving, you know, living with it for ten.
That retrospect, what did they do when it was the old gravel track? Is that, that was probably.
And I never saw it. I had the last one I was at when I worked at Sockin Valley, and it had a center track. And it was.
I mean, we had a gravel.
Right, that it was, it was a chalk outline that they had chalk wherever track. Athletic training days, the hurdles. It's almost like I was waiting like a wrestling match. I put the gloves on, get the gloves going. Someone catches a hurdle and goes down, it's gets to the best.
So we'll, we'll again get some options and speak to the vendors, see what Okay, that's good.
Next up, we're looking at the maintenance utility vehicle.
Yeah, so previous groundskeeper brought his own utility vehicle. It was an older cushman that he used throughout. And we obviously during summer, we do share athletics gator. So this would be specifically more geared towards our department. One hundred percent. The other thing that's a little different is there's actually a sprayer with this that we could potentially put free salt down as well as doing some food killing with this, with this unit, which is different than what we have in any other vehicles. Just again, look for a little bit of a time saver instead of driving the vehicles. Across fields which are four thousand pounds. This is a little bit lighter, you can tell rust wear and tear on that. Something we feel that it will be a good addition. We tried to kind of go and see where we are without the one that Kevin Conrad had before, so we feel that, you know, that the need is there to have this. This is a part of the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, and this was, this was included in our budget conversion. It's not new.
Ability to free salt everything. For the sprayer, that's a big time saver right there.
Yep, that's what we're potentially money saver too.
I guess we have that tank then for price.
Some type of Brian tank, yes. We're going to depart to, but again, this is the sprayer, but again, something new to us, but also again, using during for grass.
Other questions? How this is compared to what we budgeted?
We, this is.
So look for an option to the full board.
Someone.
All in favor? Next, the senior painted parking spaces that we're talking about.
Just an update from, yeah, our other board meetings that the, working with high school administration. Olivia. And working with Richard and working with Mr. Hoffman, we kind of came together with some proposed costs, what they might be, with the district purchasing and supplies. We're projecting what cost might be. We had to make the cost per parking space a hundred dollars per parking space. Now, I mean, that's pretty safely what it's going to cost if it paints fifty-three dollars a gallon. So there's supplies there and multiple colors can be in a mix. The application has been sent out to seniors, you know, Dr. Flicker's waiting for kind of accounting how many are interested in it. And then pretty quickly we'll have to move to catch the weather, you know, warm enough that it looks sort of right stat day, that it's going to be sunny, but dry, we'll say, and probably sunny at this point to about fifty-five degrees for most of the day. And the area that's targeted is for the benefit, say, back by the pine trees.
And the area that's targeted is where the better to say back by the pine trees along the practice fields in. Kind of rear corner farthest away from the gymnasium side. That's where the parking spaces will be. Selected for our first go with this and see how it goes. Open some students' space and, you know, we wish the cost should have been less, but otherwise, you know, the prospect.
What do we do if we have a? Student that wants to do. They have to let somebody know and try to find some. There's, there's always, we, we are fortunate to always have some folks who are willing to help out.
What's we doing about, at, at the end of the year, we just think of painting back over it with like black paint or, or pressure washing it?
That would be a black.
Okay, okay. Just figuring that it'll probably be a repaint of that again next year. Okay.
I was just thinking about that. I, I, I think we should look at. If there is any way. Pre-sell those to the next. Incoming seniors so we can avoid that. Potential and recote. And just think of anything that you're coating potentially twice a year to paint. You know, over. Sure. When I say I could, a few years, we're already building up.
Yeah.
Coat, coat.
Yeah.
So I would just, maybe we want to talk about that a little bit further if there's a.
But then that's something you're going to get into stripping.
Correct. Maybe you don't, they don't paint over it in period until you sell them. And it's a multi process come next year before you. Have the ready given. Yeah. The way you don't. They, they bought themselves with their designs for the next decade.
The new student is going to want to like paint it in. I, I don't really know. Like, I got the general idea of what's going to happen. My, my thought process is. Kids are going to buy their spot. I don't know what they have to do to get their design approved.
There's a, so I mean, there's like a form that they draw sketch on there that the design is.
And it's going to be like. Single color like white or blue.
No, we'll be, we'll have multiple.
So they're going to have multiple colors. But then the next student that comes, they're going to do their own design. So either way, it's. They're going to have to paint over it. But I guess you were just saying like, would rather than just paint over it with their design rather than paint black and then paint over it again.
Right. That was mine. Okay. And you know, our timing came about just the way it did because when it was proposed, but that would be a summer activity. So there's no reason why in May we can't get seniors to follow your. They would pick a day in the summer and they all come out and paint. It's already.
Can you not just pressure wash it? So then you wouldn't be stacking layers? Or is that not good for asphalt to like be constantly pressure washed?
There's going to blow, you know, blow away somebody.
Okay.
Somebody added in there. Again, I know there are spots that. To get lines off the sandblasted. We see a lot of places actually do a, a very light grind as well. You know, again, that's part of heavy road surface.
I mean, that's, that is definitely something that's going to happen. Do this every year for 10 years. Real good layer of paint.
Preserving some other schools, some don't paint over every year, like where they. Sort of rotate the spot a little bit. So, you know, that comes down to the number of students that are participating, right? You know, if we only have 10 or 15 students participating, we might. If we don't paint over those, we move down 10 spots or we won't be painting over them for, you know, four years. We, we just have to kind of.
Yeah, I guess you have to denote those spots as being like. Open for anybody else. Yeah, that it's a cool idea. It's just like, I hope it doesn't leave the like.
I don't, I know that's.
I doubt that it will, but.
That was brought up as a, you know, somewhat of a concern for the team, but I don't. That being the case. I think it sounds super fun. That's all. Well, I'll let you give you an update when we know the number of students who are participating and we have a date set.
Sounds good.
Just to follow up, I just looked up here on turf tank. They list football, soccer, lacrosse, baseball and. I wish to still make a call with that.
Those ovals man. Now under extra curricular fall sports update.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to share a postseason update here. We're in the middle of October. So a lot of regular seasons have. Are, are coming to an end or have ended already for many of our fall sports and we are officially in postseason for many of them. Some of the postseason has concluded already. Some are still ongoing. So I just kind of wanted to run down a list of our fall sports and give an update here. We'll start off with golf. We had Daniel Yerk who qualified for District Three. Championships at Honey Run Golf Club now from York. That was on Friday, October 3rd. He finished 25th at the fifty three championships. And he qualified for that by finishing 24th overall in the Berks Championships. And he was eighth overall as a double A qualifier for the Berks County Championship. So. The top eight in each classification move on. So congratulations, Dan, Danny for qualifying for the District Three Championships this year. In girls tennis, we have a little bit here because they are still. Going both the team and individually. So we had Madeline Bailey and Clara Angle. They were silver medalists. At the BCI double A doubles flight tournament. And Madeline and Clara earned the number one seed from Berks County. At the District Three Doubles Tournament, which is this Friday, October 17th, and that's at Hershey Racquet Club. Madeline Bailey also qualified for District Three to a singles tournament, which was this past Friday at Hershey Racquet Club. She lost to number three overall seed from Big Spring High School in the first round. The team also qualified for the BCI, BCI AA Team Tournament as the second place team from Division Two. In the quarterfinals, they beat Governor Mifflin four to one on Friday, October 3rd. Then the very next day went to Wilson for the semifinal match. They lost three nothing on that day, October 4th. But the team also qualified for the District Three Double A Tournament as the number five seed overall. In the first round last Tuesday, October 7th, they defeated the Knights of Menonite three nothing. And then in semifinal, in the quarterfinals on Thursday, October 9th. They traveled out to Penn State York Campus to take on York Catholic and they defeated them three zero as well. And they were originally scheduled to play wire missing today in a semifinal team match, but. Mother nature had. A different opinion on that. So that has been postponed to tomorrow or PM of wire missing. And the top three teams from District Three move on to the PIA double A Team Tournament. So if we win tomorrow, we will be playing the District Three Championship on Wednesday. If we lose tomorrow, we will either travel to Camp Hill Lancaster Catholic for the third place and state qualifier match on Wednesday as well. So. Still have very good things going. The, the tennis team happening here. Across country team, we have the BCI AA Championship Race tomorrow afternoon at Cootstown University. The boys' race is at four o'clock. Girls are at four forty five, District Three Championship Race. It's next Saturday, October 25th at Big Spring High School. The boys' one A race is at twelve thirty and the girls' two A race is at one thirty PM. And then the state championship race is at Parkview Golf Course next to the Giant Center in Oshie. That's on Saturday, November 1st. The girls' two A race is ten, is at ten fifteen in the morning and the boys' one A race is at eleven forty five. And our boys soccer team, they finished the regular season fourteen, three and one this year. Berks Division Four champs for the third season in a row. They qualified for Berks Playoff as the number five seed. We lost four to one at Ole this past Saturday afternoon in the quarterfinals. Our next game is the District Three to a quarterfinals, which will be here at Cootstown next Saturday, October 25th. We're currently the number four seed in District Three. And our girl soccer season is completed. They finished with a seven eleven record. Football has two regular season games remaining this Friday against Columbia, which is our senior night for football. Cheerleading band and our golf team. And then at Eckway Valley next Friday, October 24th. And cheerleading, while no formal season in the fall, they are preparing for their competition season, which their first competition is Saturday, November 22nd. Which is the BCI AA Cheer Championships. I think so. Postseason company. Sounds good. Congratulations to all athletes and coaches. This season. Dungeons and Dragons Club. So we had a proposal for a new, a new club from Mr. Eric Johnson. Dungeons and Dragons Club and. And on a very, on a separate day. They had a student come in with a very similar proposal. And kind of linked the, the two groups together. So it seems that Mr. Johnson, he also has here Sam Arnold who graduated from here in two, two thousand eighteen. Who has an interest in participating with the club as well as a volunteer advisor, along with Will Warning right here from, from Cootstown in our IT department. Shines an interest of being an advisor as well to, to lead new club here. And it seems like we'll have some good interest to start off and they hope to, to grow that as time goes on. But we're looking to meet a, a couple of times a month and. Introduce this new club here at Cootstown.
Thinking of most kids to get together. Not be on your cell phone. I'm all for it.
Actually, a new. Bigger business than real. It's a grand new business. Sixty one stop, brand new building, you're building just.
I find this remarkable because it's an 50 something year old band. This was being like, I was. So it's resurgence is shocking.
Yeah, but it's amazing.
Yeah.
I don't really know how it works. I'm assuming it's like a part, like you buy parts. Or no. It's, oh, it's not a card game out there.
Yeah, it's not a card game.
There's a lot of imagination of that. The person in charge of the game kind of creates the scenario. Or is Dice involved in some of the? Outcomes of things. I haven't played it. I don't know that I was any good at it, but I had played it probably 40 years back.
Right. There, there is a, that's about creativity that goes.
That's just why I'm so shocked. That's just so, such a throwback. Have you said good interest? How many, approximately, how many species they finished?
Initially about, about a dozen.
Oh, really? That's great. And this would be for both middle school and high school then?
Correct.
No cost for anything to the district. So I don't see any reason. Not to say, yes, to, to help with anybody else. So without looking for motion to move to the board for approval, I guess.
Yep.
To move. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, William and Sam Arnold for being able to. Volunteer to supervise.
With that, does anybody have anything else?
Just an update. I was talking with the wrestling coach last. He said he is expecting that they likely will fill the entire. Lineup for girls. That's fantastic. So I think it was about a year ago now is when we approved that. And I remember making the statement, if you build the table come.
Yeah.
Pretty encouraging. It's a lot of good opportunities for us. That would maybe have been done.
What is a full roster look like?
It's their team. That's from four, actually.
That number was, was kind of fluid. Last year we had as many as. It's a seven or eight roster at one point. But four who consistently competed throughout the season. For whom we proved that we only had one girl wrestling at the time. And that was. Spring prior to last year. Spring twenty four.
Yeah. Last year was the first year we had wrestling, the official wrestling team. It just continues to grow throughout, throughout county, throughout history, throughout state.
I think girls wrestling. And in numbers.
Yeah. It's possible. Anything else? All in favor?